At this time, we would like to ask Allison Graham from Dundee Elementary Academy to come forward and lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You please be seated. The school board meeting of February 27th is called to order. Allison, would you be willing to answer a few questions for us?
Yes, sir.
We'd like to know a little bit more about you, so we can do this one of two ways. We can ask you questions, or you can just tell us about yourself. What would you prefer to do?
Ask.
You'd like us to ask questions? Okay. So, it says here you attend Dundee Elementary Academy. What grade?
Fourth grade.
Very good. And what's your favorite thing about Dundee Elementary Academy?
There's lots of friends.
Very good. So, what's your favorite subject?
Math.
Math. And what would you like to do when you grow up?
A businesswoman.
A businesswoman. Very good for you. Well, do you have anyone here with you today that you'd like to introduce?
My mom, Carol Zimmerman.
Please, please stand. Anyone else? Do you have your teachers?
My grandma.
Oh, very good.
Delora Zimmerman. My grandma Carolyn Graham. One of my science teachers, Mrs. Cobble. Mrs. Gann. Ms. Tatum. And my assistant principal, Mrs. Depple.
Very nice. So, let's have a round of applause. So, Allison, you did a wonderful job, by the way. Thank you so much. You must be a popular young lady. You have a lot of folks here with you today. Well, thank you again for coming and we wish you all the best in your studies at Dundee Elementary. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
At our school, we're supporting the district's strategic plan and promoting positivity, and we have a Star Wars theme. And each week, we pick a Master Jedi of the Week. And this week, we have selected our superintendent, Mrs. Byrd, and our school board representative, Lori Cunningham. It means a dozen of us last week. We thank you. We appreciate everything you do.
We should probably have them come down front for a picture. This is a Master Jedi, is that correct?
Where's your lightsaber?
Do you have your lightsaber?
They're actually in the car. I wasn't sure if it was appropriate.
Very good. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Anything else? You're all sat. Okay. At this time, Madam Superintendent, do we have any revisions to the agenda?
Yes, we do. Let me do my Jedi tricks and get there. Mr. Superintendent, I mean, I'm sorry. Mr. Chair, we have C-14 bit recommendations, delete item. C-58 recommendations for non-instructional personal actions, replace backup. C-59 recommendations for temporary duty assignments, replace backup. R-60, naming the baseball locker room at George Jenkins High School at backup. R-62 recommendations for Loughman Oaks Elementary, replace backup. That concludes the revisions to the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. So, at this time, I would entertain a motion to accept the February 27, 2018 school board meeting agenda as revised.
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Superintendent, we have some special recognitions?
Yes, we do. Please join me in welcoming Alta Vista Elementary's Children's Choir for a special performance honoring Black History Month.
Good afternoon, Superintendent and Board members. I'm Makisha Loderwood, the principal of Alta Vista Elementary. And before the choir comes, I'd like to just take a moment to give a little background concerning the song that we will sing on this evening. When the Africans arrived, they had to adapt themselves to a new and foreign culture. They lived under different circumstances, all according to the colony and work and the time. Much of the African heritage got lost because, among other things, they were denied the right to practice their religious rituals. The question of whether the black music would survive or not all depended on whether the slave was sold to a British, which was Protestant, or Latin Roman Catholic colony. It seems obvious that the African music had better terms of living in the Latin colonies. It was usually strictly forbidden to practice these customs in the Protestant colonies. A great deal of the West African music and heritage survived in spite of the suppression. It was carried from generation to generation through attitudes and habits, gestures and movements. The slaves met different ethnic groups in the southern states, and there is reason to believe that blacks gradually picked up features from English and French folk songs, from ballads, Jewish songs, and Indian music. The European folk hymns dominated the religious music in the 17 and 1800s. Because of this meeting between the new ethnic groups, the blacks gradually developed new work songs and religious songs. At the same time, they managed to preserve their old cultural traditions. The supervisors allowed and even encouraged the slaves to sing. The singing contributed to them to overcome the monotony and the workout on the field. In a way, it raised the work ethic. This is how the concept of plantation songs started. The work songs did not only function as a stimulant, where the rhythm of the song subsidized the work rhythm, but also as a news channel. This was the only way the slaves could talk to each other during work, by singing. Hearing the songs, the slaves learned about topical occurrences, narratives, and the word of God. The new work songs that came into being among the blacks in America were the foundation for the later-to-be-known Afro-American music. The gospel music had its foundation in the work songs. And at this time, just let you all know that Alta Vista, we stand as a school with you. We see the tough decisions that the board has to make on every day and the tough decisions facing many of our schools. And sometimes, we're only a heartbeat ourselves away from being in those conditions. And so, whatever it is that we have to do to make it over, we're grateful and grateful for this opportunity to sing before you today. Thank you.
I'm not married at all.
That's right. You shouldn't be. Thank you. Let's give them another round of applause. Thank you again. I'd like to ask school board member Kay Fields to step in the front for our special recognitions. Next, Mr. Ernest Joe, Senior Director of the Office of Diversity, will come forward to present the Black History Month proclamation to Don Brown, Boone Middle Success Coach. The proclamation will be read by school board member Sarah Beth Reynolds.
Proclamation, School Board of Polk County, Bartow, Florida. Whereas the recognition of Black History Month is an opportune time to salute the achievements of the past, gain insight for the present, inspire progress for the future, and teach the children about heroes of colors. And whereas, African-American students make up 20% of the Polk School District, which joyfully celebrates Black History Month and the many contributions of African-American teachers, doctors, lawyers, engineers, architects, soldiers, inventors, artists, writers, scientists, and many ordinary people who have demonstrated extraordinary courage, talent, and services to others. And whereas, the significant increase in the graduation rate of African-American students in Polk County public schools shows that these students and families value the importance of a quality education as the foundation for a successful life and career. And whereas, we celebrate Black History Month, which began on February 12, 1926, and expanded in 1976 as part of the nation's bicentennial, in order to recognize the humanity of a people who survived against incredible historical odds, to exemplify to the world the power and audacity of the human spirit. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Polk County School Board of Polk County, Florida, that we designate the month of February 2018 as Black History Month. And witness whereof, I hereend to set my hand and cause the seal of the school board of Polk County to be affixed at Bartow, Florida, this 27th day of February 2018. Signed by Jacqueline M. Byrd, Superintendent of Schools, Lynn Wilson, Board Chair, Billy Townsend, District 1, Lori Cunningham, District 2, Hazel Sellers, District 3, Sarah Beth Reynolds, District 4, Kay Fields, District 5, and Tim Harris, District 7.
Do we have a motion to approve the proclamation?
So moved?
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
To the board and Superintendent Byrd, just thank you. Mr. Brown is not here, but just want to speak quickly about Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown came to our department in 2012 and continued to work with children, parents, and the community. Mr. Brown will be retiring in April. April 30 is his day. We're going to plan something from our department for him. But he's one of those young men that whenever you call on him, no matter what, he's going to deliver. So, I'm glad to accept this, only to have and also want to thank while I'm here, all of the schools, all of the principals, all the assistant principals, and all of the teachers that this month put together a wonderful program of educating our children about black history. The group that you heard a few minutes ago, they had a beautiful program at their school today also, so they're clicking on all cylinders. And also, while I'm here, I just need to say thank you very much to my school, the ITV Department, Mr. Gash and his children, and the SGA group, and also the Art Department for a wonderful month of Who Am I? and kids learning about black history. Thank you guys very much, and we appreciate it. And I'll give this to Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Coach Joe. At this time, Susan Copeland will step to the front to recognize Wells Fargo and Company.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to be here and to bring Wells Fargo with us today as one of our valued partners. I have with me Houston Tripp. He's the district manager for West Polk. Jennifer Ferris, the district manager for East, and Kim Jones, the regional services senior consultant for all of Polk County. And we'd like to recognize and thank Wells Fargo today for their longtime support for the foundation. Since 2010, they've given us $35,000, primarily to support our teacher grant program, the Teacher-to-Teacher Connection. And I was particularly happy when the three of these folks said they could be here today, because I want to thank them too, because they come to our event. They come and they help award the checks to teachers, and they talk to the teachers. And I think it really shows our educators the support we have from the business community, and that means just as much as the money does. And I will say that they came today with this big thing, which I think is a big check, and it made my blood get really, like, all happy. So, they've asked if they could say a few words, and I think it was going to be Jennifer that was going to speak.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Wells Fargo is very honored to be able to support the Polk Education Foundation. We have children, and our customers have children, who go to the schools here in Polk County. And it's such an honor for us to be able to support the organizations that support our teachers and the students where we live and serve. We are very excited today to have the opportunity to present additional $5,000 for the Polk Education Foundation. And we thank you again for allowing us the opportunity to be here.
Thank you so much. So much. It's wonderful. Thank you so much. I'd like Paul Webb, TRST, in Agriculture Science, to come forward to speak on the Agri-Fest sponsor appreciation.
Thank you, Superintendent Byrd. I would like to thank the school board members, Superintendent, and the rest of the school board of Polk County in the years of support for Agri-Fest. This is our 31st year of this program. And during the second and third week of March, we're going to see almost 6,000 4th graders come into Bartow to learn a little bit more about agriculture. But I'd like to introduce one of my FFA Federation officers in the county. This is Kyla Strickland, and she is a member of Winter Haven FFA. I'm going to let her tell you a little bit more about the Agri-Fest program.
Hi there. So, the Agri-Fest program is an educational program for the 4th graders of Polk County. The 4th graders come in and they get to learn a whole bunch of different information on different aspects of the agricultural community, different things such as about the citrus industry, the equine industry, and about livestock.
And we'd like to present the school board members and the superintendent with some money trees. Something that the school board did.
Who made that?
So, these are just gifts from the Agri-Fest committee, which is made up of a combination of school board, the extension service, and also the Farm Bureau that helps put this on every year. So, thank you for all that you do for us and all you help support this program.
Thank you. Thank you. They're beautiful.
What are these?
They're called money trees.
Oh, they are.
They really are.
Literally.
This really existed.
Thank you for the money tree. I hope it blossoms.
Thank you again. Mr. Chair, this concludes our recognitions for today.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. At this time, I would like to invite anyone who would like to come to the podium and to talk about any item on the agenda. So, if you'd like to speak to any item on this evening's agenda, please come forward and do so at this time. We have three sets of minutes to approve. Item C-8, approval of the minutes of the January 9, 2018 work session. What's the pleasure of the board?
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C-9, approval of the minutes of the January 23, 2018 work session. What's the pleasure of the board?
So moved?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And item C-7, approval of the minutes of the January 23, 2018 school board meeting.
So move? Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Before we do that, is there anything that any board member would like to remove from the consent agenda and add it to the regular agenda? Okay. So, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda for January 27, 2018.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Madam Superintendent, we have new administrators?
Yes, we do. We have quite a few this evening. I'm pleased to recommend the appointment of Julie Thomas as Assistant Principal of Lewis-Santon Woodbury. Ms. Thomas previously served as literacy coach of Juanita Elementary. She attended Florida Southern, earning a bachelor's degree in elementary education. She went on to earn her master's degree in educational leadership from Nova Southeastern University. I welcome Julie Thomas. Yes, that's you.
I was hoping you'd call me last, so I could copy everybody else. I'd just like to thank Superintendent Byrd. I'd like to thank members of the board for this opportunity and this vote of confidence in my ability to fulfill this position. I'm very excited to work in this capacity for Polk County. I'd also like to thank my principal, Nilda Catabayo, Marlene Taveras, who is my current AP, my future principal, Ms. Wise, my husband for his support, and my various family members that couldn't be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you and welcome. Next, I'm pleased to recommend Kevin Robertson as Assistant Principal of Kathleen Senior. Mr. Robertson previously served as Acting Assistant Principal of Kathleen Senior. He attended the University of South Florida, earning a bachelor's degree in social science education. He went on to earn his master's degree in educational leadership from the University of South Florida. Welcome.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank the board and Superintendent Byrd for this opportunity. I know this is a tremendous task, and I look forward to it. I would like to thank Mr. Thomas and Mr. Patton for the mentorship and guidance that they provided me over the years. And I have with me my fiancee, Kelly Misslovic, my son, Alan Robertson, and her children, Lindsay and Dylan Misslovic. And I want to thank Mr. Joe and Mr. Jackson for their guidance and leadership.
Thank you and welcome. Next, I'm pleased to recommend the appointment of David Wiggs as Director of Travis Technical College. Mr. Wiggs previously served as the Acting Director of Travis Technical College. He attended the University of South Florida, earning a bachelor's degree in criminology. He went on to earn his master's degree in educational leadership from the University of South Florida. Welcome, Mr. Wiggs. You have a fan club.
I would like to thank my staff for their support, Superintendent Byrd, board members. I would like to thank Dr. Dickens for his mentorship, Dr. Huetek for the opportunity. And again, I really, really appreciate the support of the staff. I'm pleased to work with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you and welcome.
I am so very relieved, because I thought we had some folks here to protest up there.
Next, I'm pleased to recommend the appointment of Darren Williams as Director of Polk Virtual. Mr. Williams previously served as the Acting Director of Polk Virtual School. He attended Florida Agricultural Mechanical University, FAMU, earning a bachelor's degree in elementary education. He went on to earn his master's degree in educational leadership from Nova Southeastern University. Welcome, Mr. Williams.
I want to thank the board, as well as Superintendent Bird, and Dr. Huetek, and many other members of the school board, leadership committees, and that I reach out to support for all the time, and they're there to answer questions and kind of guide me in the right direction. So, I thank you for that. Hopefully, my family right now, everybody's doing homework, so when we get home, I'll get done. So, thank you.
Thank you and welcome. Next, I'm pleased to recommend the appointment of Jacqueline Agard as Principal of Clem Churchill Elementary. Ms. Agard previously served as the Acting Principal of Clem Churchill Elementary. She attended Hunter College, earning a bachelor's degree in Spanish. She went on to earn her master's degree in educational leadership. Welcome.
I'd like to take this opportunity once again to thank you all for believing in us and supporting us. I do belong to a fabulous region. Thank you, Ms. Henderson, for all your support, along with my colleagues in the region. And I hope that we can continue to be successful as we have been. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. Next, I'm pleased to recommend the appointment of Rebecca Ekman as Principal of Floral Avenue. Ms. Ekman previously served as Acting Principal of Floral Avenue Elementary. She attended Florida Southern College, earning a bachelor's degree in exceptional student education. She later went on to earn her master's degree in educational leadership from the University of South Florida. Welcome.
Thank you Superintendent Bird and board members for this wonderful opportunity. I am looking forward to serving the students and the community of Bartow. I have a few people here that have supported me along the way in this wonderful journey. First, my wonderful husband, who is also an educator in Bartow. He's here with my oldest daughter, who's smiling back there. And then, my best friend, who's also a wonderful educator at Southwest Middle School, Katrina Lynn, one of my many mentors who guided me along this way and supported me every step of the way and still does, Julie Ward, the principal of Rochelle. And then, my partner in crime as we move forward in this adventure, Tammy Ruhl, the Assistant Principal at Floral. And again, thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you and welcome. Last but not least, I recommend the appointment of Alexandria Wise as Principal of Lewis Anna Woodbury Elementary. Ms. Wise previously served as Acting Principal of Lewis Anna Woodbury Elementary. She attended the University of Florida, earning a bachelor's degree in elementary education. She went on to earn her master's degree in educational leadership from the University of South Florida. Welcome.
Thank you, board members and Superintendent Bird. It is an honor to serve the school district of Polk County and also the students and family, the entire community of Fort Meade. I was Assistant Principal in the town of Fort Meade for five years, and now to continue to serve them is a blessing. I do look forward to the tasks on hand and also am very pleased that we are fully staffed now, as my second Assistant Principal was appointed today as well. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. This concludes our new administrators for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Congratulations to all of our new administrators, and thank you so very much for all that you do. And if you would like to leave at this time, this might be a good opportunity.
Yeah.
So, now, we're going to move to our regular agenda. This is item R60. This is the naming of the baseball locker room at George Jenkins High School. I'd like to ask Mrs. Ellis to say a few words and to make this motion.
Okay. First, I'll make the motion. I move for approval of naming the George Jenkins High School baseball locker room the Mike Curry Fieldhouse.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Yes. And I am so pleased to recommend the naming of this field, baseball locker room, for Mike Curry. He has, for 14 years, heavily supported the baseball program at George Jenkins. He is a very generous man. Not only has he been a major supporter of the baseball team, but he supports the entire George Jenkins High School. He contributes to many, many of their activities and to their students. He is, he's a very humble man who really believes in public education, and he believes in giving back. And so, I'm just very pleased to join with the school in giving this Mike Curry this honor.
Thank you, Mrs. Ellis. So, we do have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is item R61. It's approval of the amendment to the IDEA Part B-K, K-12 entitlement grant in the amount of $2,348,079.03, bringing it to a total amount of $25,163,651.03. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is item number R62. This is the approval of the architect's contract for the Lofman Oaks 16 Classroom Edition. This is project number C-00305, in the amount of $278,580.03. And so, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mrs. Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make a comment and thank Ms. Usher for helping us to achieve getting this done as quickly as possible. I know that we need the capacity at Lofman Oaks for a lot of the students that we have in the northeast section of our community, and I know this was quite a rigorous endeavor to try to get this done as quick as possible. So, I just want to say thank you so much for devoting the time and attention that it needed to get on the agenda for tonight. So, thank you so much on behalf of the kids.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Cunningham. Ms. Reynolds?
My comments are basically the same as Ms. Cunningham, but I know you worked very hard to make sure this got done on this board meeting and not a couple months from now. So, we greatly appreciate it and definitely need that support in the northeast corner. So, thank you for your work on this.
Okay. Any further discussion by the board? So, the motion on the floor is approval of the architect's contract for the Lofman Oaks 16 Classroom Edition. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is item R63. This is approval of the property conveyance along Walt Williams Road near Wendell Watson Elementary to the Board of County Commission for purposes of constructing a sidewalk. What's the pleasure of the board?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Look forward to a sidewalk near Wendell Watson.
And Davenport.
So, we have a motion and a second. And again, this is approval of the property conveyance along Walt Williams Road near Wendell Watson Elementary to the Board of County Commissions for purposes of building, constructing a sidewalk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is approval of the property conveyance along County Road 547 near Davenport School of the Arts to the Board of County Commission for purposes of constructing a sidewalk for the safety of our students. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? And again, to be clear, this is a motion to approve the property conveyance along County Road 547 near Davenport School of the Arts to the Board of County Commission for purposes of constructing a sidewalk. So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the list is item R64. This is granting authority to the staff to begin negotiations for charter contract renewal with Discovery Academy of Lake Alfred.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Townsend?
Yeah, thanks. I had to step out for a moment this morning, so wasn't able to address this, but I want everybody to hear this. Discovery in the last year, I think, and Melissa can get the precise numbers on this, sent 30-ish kids away from the school and had 30 that left voluntarily because they weren't a good fit. I will not vote for a contract renewal of this school if that number is not addressed. I want that known. It may not matter. I mean, you might be able to go right to Tallahassee and get it overturned, but if 60 kids are getting turned out of your school, then you're not doing a good job. And I voted against our magnet school that sits right next door to it. It's absurd in this county that we have two giant schools that sit next to each other and a kid who lives across the street can't go to either as a matter of right. So, I just want to put everybody on notice about that, and that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Mr. Harris?
Two issues. One, just to restate my continued disapproval for a 15-year contract. I do not think in any case that is in the public's best interest to give a 15-year contract to an outside entity as a charter school. Secondly, I don't think the public is aware. I think it ought to be given more media attention, but this is one of those schools, and we have several in the district. A single school has a principal and a superintendent. That's how your tax dollars are being spent at that school. They don't call it a superintendent. They call it an executive director, but that person is over the principal of the school. That's not how my tax dollars spend. We have one superintendent who serves over 120 schools, and Discovery Academy of Lake Alfred hires someone to be the superintendent of one school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any further comments? So, we have a motion and a second to grant authority to staff to begin negotiations for charter contract renewal with Discovery Academy of Lake Alfred. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. The next item on the list is item R65. This is a motion granting approval to staff to begin negotiations for charter contract renewal with Polk State College Lakeland Gateway to College High School. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? So, I should mention that I will be abstaining from voting on this item due to my relationship with Polk State College, and the appropriate paperwork has been completed. Mr. Bridges?
Yes.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And again, the motion on the floor is granting authority to staff to begin negotiations for charter contract renewal with Polk State College Lakeland Gateway to College High School. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Back to the previous question. I don't think staff got all seven votes. Did you get all seven of our votes? No, I was, I was, I support opening negotiations. It's the future vote that's in question.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Are we okay now? All right, so, at this time, we would go to the superintendent for a report.
Thank you. If you could feast your eyes to the screens, Polk County Public Schools has several students received the LB Brown Youth Leadership Award during the LB Brown Heritage Festival in Bartow earlier this month. Award winners represented Bartow Middle, Bartow High, Bartow High IB, Fort Meade Middle Senior, Galls Academy, Mulberry Middle, Mulberry High, Summerlin Academy, Travis Technical College, and Union Academy. The awards are part of the LB Brown Festival, which honors Lawrence B. Brown, who was born into slavery but became a successful businessman in Bartow. This month, our schools joined across the nation to show appreciation for our bus drivers with cards and gifts. The Love the Bus Celebration is a nationwide event held every February to thank and recognize transportation personnel for the important work that they do, and we say thank you to each of them. Our hearth project, which provides assistance to homeless students, received an outstanding response from the community for a special Valentine's Day project. Generous individuals and organizations donated several hundreds of boxes of cards, as well as nearly 700 stuffed animals, so that our homeless elementary students could celebrate Valentine's Day with their classmates. Students from the Lake Region High School Culinary Academy created a pop-up restaurant at the Legoland Hotel on Valentine's Day evening. Students were responsible for marketing the restaurant, selecting the menu, and preparing and serving the meals. The dinner was sold out, with 60 attendees enjoying a delicious meal that included a steak dinner and lobster bis soup. Catherine Arkinger from Harrison School of the Arts and Bartow's High Maria Gonzalez have been named Sunshine State Scholars for 2018. The annual honor is presented to high school juniors from each district who are top students in the areas of science, technology, engineering, or math. This year's scholars will be recognized by the Florida Department of Education during a ceremony in Orlando in May. Congratulations to both of them. Board Member Kay Fields and I had the honor of serving as judges for the annual MLK Youth Oratorical Contest in late January. A dozen of our schools were represented in this contest, and all of the submissions were amazing. Students wrote about the enduring legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King and the impact he is making on the new generation of lives. Congratulations, students, on a wonderful job. In late January, we celebrate the winners of the Polk County 17th Annual Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Essay Challenge. This year's theme was Together We Win With Love and Humanity. Congratulations to our first-place winners from Frostfruit Elementary, Cotton Palmer Elementary, Lake Gibson Middle, and George Jenkins High School. Congratulations to all of our winners, and thank you to everyone that supported the work that we did for the essay contests and Black History Month this month. The March meetings will be held Tuesday, March 13, 2018, beginning with the work session at 12:30 PM in the superintendent's conference room, followed by the school board meeting at 5:00 PM in the auditorium located at 1915 South Floral Avenue, Bartow, Florida. This concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Do we have an attorney's report, Mr. Bridges?
No, no report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Do we have an auditor's report, Ms. Matthews? Thank you, Ms. Matthews. At this time, we'll go to our board members' reports, starting with Mr. Townsend.
Hi. Two things. First, I want to talk about for a second the Kathleen High grant that we have received. It was in the paper today. We discussed it this morning, but I want to put it in a little bit of a political context, and I want to enlist everybody's help who's listening to this. To me, the key point of that grant is they're providing about five people whose job it is to help kids with their lives, to help them. There's a psychologist, there's a counselor. It's exactly the kind of thing we've been talking about in the wake of the shooting. Moreover, this happened as part of, we became one of the 25 schools that the state sort of agreed to fund after the controversy over Eboni 69. I think the importance of that is there was some concern that if we stood up to our legislators, if we put some pressure on them, if we talked openly about how badly they failed us, that they would retaliate against us, or that they would punish us in some way. And as I said this morning, this is the opposite of retaliation. I would like to believe that they're doing this out of the goodness of their heart. I don't believe that, not for a second. I believe this is a reaction to pressure. I believe this is a reaction to our community demanding that we be treated with respect and that our teachers be supported. And I, 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 I think there are, are, are good results that come from that, and I, I hope we'll, we'll draw some, some lessons from that. And one of the most important le, lessons is that this collection of, of people who are going to help our kids, the, 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 the four or five per, person, humanity team, is only funded through the, through the state for about a year and a year and a half. The idea is what happens to those five positions when, when the grant runs out? We need to demand they're not taken away. We need, we need to find ways to, to continue to have them, them funded, and we need every school to have that kind of team put, put in place, because that's what our kids need. That's what our t, our teachers need, so, so that they can teach and, 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 and not have to spend all of their time, uh, engaged with the, the human needs of kids, which, which they do right, do right now. So I, it, to me, it's, 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 it's a very significant develop, develop, development. I wanted to make everybody aware of it, and I wanted to try to get everybody to commit to, um, to, to fighting to keep those people in place, because we're going to need to, to, to need, eat them, not just at Kathleen, but at many, many o, o, other schools. And secondly, um, you know, I, I, I just wanted to thank everybody in the last two weeks who works for us and, and, and who doesn't work for us, who's, who's out, out, out there in the world, who kept their heads, who, who, who tried to, to respond in a, a thought, a thoughtful, calm way to what was a, a terrible situation, uh, that caused rip, ripples of terrible situations here. Uh, when something like that happens, when, when something like Park, Parkland ha, happens, there are a lot of powerful forces that get unleashed, and the only way to manage them in a way that they don't hurt more pe, more pe, people is, is, is to be leaders and, and to think through what we do, to think through what we hear, and, and to act intelligently. And I, I think we've done a pretty good job of that in the last two, the last week and a half, and I just want to thank every, every, everybody for that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Mrs. Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of things. One is, um, as I'm going around doing, uh, school visits here in the springtime, um, I've had several school administrators, um, compliment the district office on its public relations campaign recently and trying to get information out to the schools. We've recently started to include a synopsis, if that's the right word, of each of our board meetings and work sessions, and I've had several tell me that that was an improvement because they have a real quick, um, little list of what we voted on, how it went, why we're doing it, and so forth. It can be passed along to staff. And once again, as we try to continue to be transparent and let our teachers and our staff know throughout the district what's going on, this is certainly the beginning of being able to continue to do that. So just wanted to tell Ms. Pleasant, thank you so much for your time and energy in getting this information out. I know there's videos and all that other kind of fun stuff, um, as well. So if you're interested to know what's going on, um, there's a synopsis that's going to be generated after each one of our meetings. And secondly, and most importantly, um, I'm very excited, uh, that we announced our two thousand and eighteen Teacher of the Year and School Related Employee of the Year this past Wednesday. It was a beautiful evening, um, and I was so impressed, uh, Ms. Superintendent, about the number of students that were involved once again this year in that beautiful, um, event. We had children, excuse me, from our elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools that helped to emcee the event, and I thought it just added so much class, and what a great opportunity for those children. So I just personally want to congratulate, uh, Michelle Dinwiddie, a tenth-grade English teacher at Lake Gibson High School, was announced as our two thousand and eighteen Polk County Teacher of the Year. And I'd like to congratulate, uh, Margie Foreman, a clinic nurse at James E. Stevens Elementary, as our school district's two thousand and eighteen School Related Employee of the Year. And while we only choose one in each category, uh, to me, each of our teachers that come to school every single day and our school-related employees are all winners, because everybody gives of their time and their effort and everything that they do every day for every child. So congratulations to all of you out there, and we thank you so much for what you do for our children. We appreciate it, and we ask that, um, blessings continue, um, to flow so that you can truly continue to impact our students in such a positive way. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Cunningham. Uh, Mrs. Sellers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of things, too. First of all, I want to congratulate to our Teacher of the Year and our School Related Employee of the Year. And like Mrs. Cunningham, everyone in that room could have been the Teacher of the Year or the School Related Employee. We have many, many dedicated teachers and staff members in this district. And I also want to give thanks to two of our former Teachers of the Year, Christie Bassett and Jessica Solano, who today came forward, not only were they Polk County Teachers of the Year, but they were Florida Teachers of the Year in their respective years when we chose them. And they wrote a grant, and they have come back to our schools as teachers, thankfully, and now they are working with other teachers to bring the leadership and the rigor and the professionalism up for all of our teachers. They call their program Leading From the Classroom, and they're learning about best practices, they're learning to collaborate, and this is a lot of work for these two excited and passionate young women, but they truly believe in giving back. And, um, I think this program is going to, once again, this is a grant, but I believe that this program will continue in our district, so they have planted a seed that is going to, um, help with professional development with our teachers for years to come. But, um, they are a shining example of just a couple of our teachers. There's many, many more out there just like them. So thank you, Christie and Jessica. I also want to congratulate Bartow High School. For the fifth consecutive year, the Bartow Coed Cheerleading Team has won their state championship. And, yes. I don't know, I don't know if we need to do some research. I don't know if any team, sports team, has ever won five consecutive state championships in a row. So, um, they may have tied or broken that record. I don't, I, we haven't researched that yet. But they also, a couple of weeks later, um, won the world championship at Disney. So not only are they state champions, but they're world champions. And their coach, Lori Jollif, I can't thank her enough. She is second to none, and I appreciate that she stays at Bartow High School and continues working with those. Cheerleading is not like it was in my day. To me, this is the scariest sport that we have out there. When you see what these kids can do, it is amazing. So I'm very proud of them. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sellers. Uh, Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you. Um, I have just a couple of staff shout-outs that, I know Rachel, that Ms. Cunningham already spoke about you, but the transparency that you have brought to this district, basically overnight, is pretty remarkable. Um, and I just want to thank you again for all that you're doing, and Superintendent Bird for allowing her to, to put us out there, because it does open you up to a lot of criticism. But I think it's, it's incredible that we've been able to share what's happening in our meetings, that all of our teachers obviously have to be in the classroom during that time. We would much rather than be in the classroom teaching than taking off to come and hear us talk. Um, and so the fact that you've provided them with a synopsis of, you know, this is what's happening at minute twenty-five, if you need to go there, is really something that is of extreme value to our teachers. And also, I mean, really, everything that, that you have brought to us. From a school board member's standpoint, I feel like I know everything that's going on, even when I'm not necessarily in Bartow every day, so thank you. Um, and then also, Dr. Huetek, apparently you've been spending some time in Winter Haven, because I was stopped going into Publix this week by some, by two ladies who were outside talking about what wonderful things you were doing and how engaging you were and how excited they were for you to be, um, the acting deputy. And then I also received a phone call on my way here this morning from someone else, just saying what a great conversation they had had with you and that they were so encouraged by the, the optimism that you were bringing to the district. So thank you for your always positive attitude, um, in moving us forward. And I had one other thing that I have to, oh, also, I am a participant in leadership Winter Haven this year, which I know several of us spoke at last week. Um, and my leadership class was so moved by what they saw in Polk County Public Schools that they are actually adopting Inwood and have started collecting donations for their pantry, um, but it was very exciting, because I was not traveling on the bus with them that day. So I had no idea any of this was happening. I was dealing with a family emergency. But they, I had been afterwards found on the Facebook group that they really were all so moved to see everything that's happening in our public schools, but especially at Inwood. So I, you know, Ms. Niedringhouse is fantastic there. She coordinated the whole trip and really let us see some of the ins and outs. So, um, just a thank you to Inwood for opening their arms to us and showing the community what we're doing in Polk County Public Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Uh, Mrs. Fields?
I have a couple of items. I wanted to, um, say how proud I am of Kathleen High School and excited about the four-plus-million-dollar, uh, School of Hope Grant. Uh, Kathleen is very dear to my heart. All my kids graduated from Kathleen High School, as was my husband. Uh, and I'm very excited about what, uh, what I'm seeing there. Uh, they, they have a great team. I was at the community assessment team meeting on last week and got a chance to listen to some of the things that they have going on, and one of the things that they are doing, I think Dr. Aix talked about it, uh, this morning in work session, is that on Saturdays, they're having Saturday Academies. They're focusing on AC prep for, um, for their, uh, students. They have the FSA writing retakes, the FSA writing, the FSA ELA retakes, the FSA, um, ELA and Algebra One retakes and Algebra One geometry. So they are focusing on this every Saturday almost, and, and, uh, Coach Joe sent me a picture on, uh, on this past Saturday, and they had a, a very nice attendance, and, uh, we just want to continue to encourage them, and, uh, they are really working hard to, to make the gains that they need in order to turn this school around. And I also got a chance to, uh, go into the, uh, meeting for the Kathleen Middle School and for Griffin Elementary School, and they're working hard as well, and Crystal Lake, uh, Elementary School was there as well. And I just want to encourage the community, when you have time, and if you know the dates of the community assessment team meetings, please attend. There's so much good stuff going on, and it's very disheartening when you go to the meetings and, and, and it's very poorly attended. So, uh, again, I know that is probably on our website, and if you call the schools that are having to, to go through this process, they can tell you the dates of the meetings, and we just encourage you all to come out and share your support and, and get involved in some of the schools that are really trying to, to turn their situations around. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Fields. Mr. Harris?
A couple of positive items tonight to, uh, share. Uh, thank you to my colleagues for pointing out that the finalists from District Seven won Teacher of the Year, and in my, uh, recollection, the first time Lake Gibson High School has had a teacher win that honor. So congratulations to Michelle Dinwiddie from Lake Gibson High School, where I used to teach. Go District Seven. Also, another positive thing, I don't know if the majority of our public knows that, uh, Polk County Public Schools, that's the name, Polk County Public Schools, has a YouTube channel. There are one hundred and forty-three videos posted for your viewing pleasure. I encourage you to go to youtube.com and subscribe, doesn't cost you anything, to Polk County Public Schools YouTube channel. There are only four hundred and seventy-one people subscribed so far. By the next board meeting, let's have at least a thousand subscribers to Polk County Public Schools YouTube channel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I, I would just like to echo some comments made by Mr. Townsend and Mrs. Fields related to the Hope Grant at, at Kathleen High School. This is the state stepping up to the plate and doing the right thing. It's the state putting our resources where we need them. I know they're giving us the money, and, and it's up to us to decide how to use that, but clearly we're going to be directing resources in the right way, and I think we're going to see tremendous, um, improvement in, at, at Kathleen High School, although I would probably disagree with the state as to where we are currently. I still think this is much needed, and, and my only hope would be that at the end of the day, when we see the outcomes, that we can go back to the state and say, this is how you improve schools throughout the state and here in Polk County. So I'm, I'm hoping that we can somehow find a way to, to demonstrate and to send that message to the state after we, we see the improvement we're going to see there, I'm certain that we're going to see there. And that concludes my comments, so.